Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to welcome you to the Hayden City Council Meeting of Tuesday, August 8th, 2023. It is 5:00 PM. Calling this meeting to order. Could I please have a roll call vote, Abby?
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember DePries.
Yes.
Councilmember Satterfield.
Yes.
And Councilmember White.
Yes.
Council President Roder, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Members of council, I'd like to note a change in the schedule tonight. We are moving our visitor and public comment to item number three and public hearing up to item number two. Ladies and gentlemen, as many of you have heard me say time and time again, city of Hayden does business five days a week, at least eight hours a day. Many of the things that the city does goes on without the involvement of city council. However, there are, excuse me, there are some items that the city undertakes that require the approval or the consent of city council. And tonight on our consent calendar, we have item 1A, approval of the June 13th, 2023 city council workshop minutes. 1B, the approval of the June 27th, 2023 city council workshop minutes. Item 1C, approval of June 27th, 2023 city council meeting minutes. 1D, the approval of the July 11th, 2023 city council workshop minutes. 1E, the approval of July 11th, 2023 city council meeting minutes. 1F, the approval of the July 21st, 2023 city council special meeting minutes. 1G, the approval of Ladder Fest event permit application and loudspeaker use request. 1H, the ratification of the 2023 Hayden Days Entertainment Agreement with Allison Joy Williams. 1I, acceptance of Richard W. May dedication of right-of-way and grant of easement. 1J, the acceptance of Marketplace at Miles LLC dedication of right-of-way and grant of easement. 1K, the ratification of the July 2023 payroll. 1L, the ratification of bills paid on 7/25, 7/26, 7/27, and 8/1, 2023. And 1M, the approval of bills for payment. Members of council, do you have any comments or questions regarding these items? Hearing none, I entertain a motion regarding the consent calendar.
A motion to approve the consent calendar. Second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the consent calendar. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Abby.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Satterfield.
Yes.
Council President Roder.
Yes.
And Councilmember DePries.
Yes.
Mr. Mann.
Yes, ma'am.
In additions and corrections, I did have a correction to the agenda that I would like to propose, but I didn't get a chance in there.
What is your proposal?
I would like, I would move to postpone action item seven, the Hanson property land acquisition, to a later meeting, please.
Okay, we have a motion from a member of council here to postpone item seven to a meeting. Do we have a second? Hearing none, motion fails for lack of a second. We are now moving into our public comment.
Public hearing.
Pardon me, public hearing. Okay, I'll find it, folks, just a minute. In a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, the staff will introduce a subject case, the applicant will present, the staff will then present a summary of the staff report, then open it up for public comment directed to the council and not to the members of the audience. Commenters will be called on in the order of support, uncommitted, and those opposed to the subject case. Comments are limited to five minutes, and at approximately the four-minute point, I will wave a piece of paper so you know you have about one minute left. The applicant will then have an opportunity for a rebuttal. The rebuttal must be directed specifically at any comments that the, that the public comment made up to that point and not other general items. I will then, at that point, close the public hearing and have council deliberations. It is 5:06, the public hearing is in order. Donna, what have you got for us?
Well, tonight's public hearing is a single public hearing for public comments. It's the Revel comprehensive plan and zone map amendment. So at the end of the public hearing and after council deliberation, you'll actually have two motions, one in relationship to the comp plan amendment request and the second in relationship to the zone map amendment request. So the applicant is the Stan Craft Boat Company and the owner is Revel LLC. It's approximately seven acres of land between two parcels and the property today stands vacant. It's on the kind of three corners. It's on Wyoming Avenue. It is east of North Ramsey Road and it is west of North Sandler Road. The existing zone designation is residential suburban and it's envisioned on the future land use map as single-family residential and the request is for a change to light industrial. So Hayden City Code 1117E8 identifies that if the requested change is not in accordance with the adopted comprehensive plan, then an amendment to the comprehensive plan, in this case, the future land use map, shall be required prior to a decision on the proposed zone map amendment. So again, this is a request to amend the future land use map from single-family residential to light industrial and it's a request to amend the zone map from residential suburban to light industrial. So a comprehensive plan map amendment, just from process, is to conduct a public hearing. The city council, after consideration, should a change be made to the request or to the recommendation, shall hold another hearing prior to making that decision. The plan, which the Planning and Zoning Commission, you have their recommendation as part of the process. And then, once the plan has been amended, it becomes effective once it is adopted by resolution of the city council. And any person may request the Planning and Zoning Commission, may put a request forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a plan amendment at any time. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends those amendments to the comprehensive plan as well as other ordinance authorized by this chapter to the city council at any time. That's just a matter of process. All right, with that, I'm going to turn it over to the applicants. I think it's Mr. Hilsop that's presenting. On behalf, let's see if it comes up. There you go.
Good evening. My name is Scott Hilsop. I'm a general counsel for Stan Craft Companies and Revel is one of our portfolio companies. I'm here with Nels Erickson. He's one of our special projects personnel at Stan Craft Companies. So I also want to take a second and say thanks to Donna and her team going through the planning commission and the time going through and preparing for this. It's been, they've been a great help and very cooperative in giving information and providing us some information. So the summary of our request. We are, the future land use map amendment, the FLUM, and the zoning map amendment are the two things that we're asking for here, as Donna just went through. Those are two required steps in order to change the land classification to be useful for what we would like to use the property for and what we think is appropriate for the area. Again, that change is going from a current residential suburban zoning to a light industrial zone. So the layout before you, you have a lot of information in front of you, council members. You've had a chance to look at it and it's provided to you. So I want to be efficient in the time that I'm spending with you today. We have these two requests. Again, the modification for future land use map to make it in accordance with the 2040 comprehensive plan and the modification of the zone map allowing light industrial use on the two lots. We're going to look at standards of approval as a guide and the comprehensive plan goals and policies when we're looking at the first request and the standards of approval as a guide and letters and background information with regard to the zoning change request. With regard to the standards of approval, five of them here, the first one, I want to point out to the council that the commission shall consider the existing zoning district regulations and make and may recommend approval, conditional approval, modification, or denial. In this case, the zoning and planning commission recommended approval unanimously. And so I think an important part, the panel looked at it, made their deliberations and looked at some of these same standards, goals and policies, and recommended unanimously for approval. So, once that has happened, then what happens next? The city council may impose conditions upon rezoning where such conditions are required to ensure that the proposed uses of the area are consistent with the community needs. In this case, the zoning and planning commission, as it says there, also may recommend conditions upon rezoning. In this case, they did not make recommendations for any sort of condition for the approval. No conditions made, simple unanimous approval. Number three, the amendment to the zoning map and zone text shall be in accordance with the future land use map and the goals and policies found in the Hayden Comprehensive Plan. The change is necessary to make that a fact here. The 2040 plan is not consistent with what's currently being used or what we want to have happen. Number four, the amendment to the zoning map and zone text shall align with the zone district's proposed intent. And then, number five, the amendment to the zone map and zone text shall be consistent with the neighborhood context. So I want to draw your attention to number three, the amendment to the zone map and zone text shall be in accordance with the future land use map and the goals and policies found in the Hayden Comprehensive Plan. The FLUM needs to be modified. As Donna pointed out, it's got a single-family residential use. The current FLUM has, the zone is the residential suburban. So a comprehensive plan goals and policies provide the necessary reasoning to make that change and I believe the comprehensive plan goals and policies show that this change is in the best interest of the city of Hayden. All right. So future land use map change. Goal number three, to maintain attractive and balanced mix of land uses, densities, and housing types, ensuring that the future character of the community promotes a greater choice and opportunities. I think that's one of the goals that is applicable in this case. Goal number eight, ensuring that the development can be serviced by existing public facilities or extended to adequately serve the development. So in this case, the staff report shows that number eight is satisfied, in fact, that the use of a light industrial use on this property will be less burdensome than a resident, than a single-family residential use, in particular the sewer. And so if, if you were, if the council were to keep this and say, we know we want to use a single-family residential use and you put the houses in there, it's going to be more burdensome than the use we're asking for. The light industrial use is less burdensome to the city of Hayden and its utilities. Goal number 13. The council spent a lot of time and money working on the Ramsey Road project. We all know that's happening. It's moving. There's been land purchased. In fact, there's been land purchased on this site by this council to expand Ramsey Road. So when, in number 13, we're talking about enhancing bicycle pedestrian connectivity and infrastructure in order to better serve the residents and tourists, protecting its historical and cultural character and attracting new business. If that goal is to be achieved, this change does that. There is a sidewalk that's being put in that allow for pedestrian traffic along Ramsey Road. That's part of the property that this council purchased from Revel. It's going to be put in. There's some swale and some grassy area next to that as well, so the, the appearance and the use and the ability for pedestrians and bicycle traffic is consistent with this particular use. Policy number eight, switching to policies now from goals, remember those two types that we have to look at. Again, improving the pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicle safety along these streets, that improved, that improvement and widening of Ramsey Road, it's available here as well. It's consistent with goal 13. Policy 23, ensure that the land use and zoning capability related to the development density and type occurring in close proximity to the Corlent Airport. This is important, where I'm going to talk about a little bit further on as well. The, the land use in proximity to the airport is, is super important in that we have a runway there, we have some light industrial there, we have some other noise issues there. We have a safety zone that will prevent the use of the property for single-family residential use. So policy 23 is kind of a big one in, in this request. Goal number three, again, touching on this, the proposed zone amendment balances the neighborhood by creating a mix of uses that would provide the site that is more attractive with landscaping along the planned updated Ramsey corridor. The light industrial use is one that, that will allow for us to have a transitioning area between the airport and the neighborhood to the east. The neighborhood to the east is a mixed residential neighborhood, also normally a transitional type neighborhood. The zoning, the FLUM currently has this property as single-family residential use, one house. The mixed residential to our west, excuse me, to our east is a single-family, a duplex or a triplex in that neighborhood. That neighborhood's already somewhat of a transitional type neighborhood that kind of buffers. So the light industrial use is a better use than a single-family residential use in this particular spot. The current zoning of a residential suburban area is more of a gentle person's farm, a larger home, a little bit of agriculture, which is kind of out of place next to the airport and next to a mixed residential use. So we have kind of an island happening right now with the residential suburban use. The comprehensive plan having it be a single-family use is also kind of an island. It'll be surrounded by light industrial on one side and mixed use, which is a transitional type use on the east side. So we're kind of creating, it's in an island and if we don't make the change, we'll be creating an island again. Goal number eight, to ensure that all developments can be serviced by existing public facilities and extend adequately the service of the development. Again, this, this use that we're looking to go towards and the request that we're making makes sense in where the city is taking this area. We're widening Ramsey. The request we're using or looking for on this property is that of a light industrial use, which is clean air, light work, a little bit of wholesale, a little bit of retail. It's designed for this type of use next to the airport, next to a thoroughfare or an arterial like Ramsey, which you're putting in. It is a good buffer between that and the mixed residential use that's already next to our property. Looking at some of the, the smaller text here, it's important for me to point out to you that the existing public water main is also routed through the subject property. So we have those public facilities that are there and it makes good sense to use this parcel as that light industrial use as opposed to a single-family residential use. Touching base on goal 13, the upcoming Ramsey Road corridor improvement project that is going to be constructed, like I said, does have that pathway. We are going to have a sidewalk. Bicycles and pedestrians will be able to move along this area safely away from traffic and it just makes good sense there on that corner of Ramsey and Wyoming. The, some of the policies and the goals that kind of overlap, which is good because it does helps us double check and make sure that we're really looking at this consistently. Again, the pedestrian safety, vehicle safety is important, especially when we have the airport, which has business. We have the parcel that we're looking at, which can be a good buffer, having that on both sides of Ramsey, which is a busy road. Next to that is the current mixed residential use where families and people will be living and do live in that, in that duplex or house or triplex area. So I made a comment earlier about the proximity to the airport and how important it is that this parcel be a good buffer zone for the mixed residential use next to us currently. The airport itself, and I'm going to show you in a moment on a map, has a lot of activity, both in the industrial world, which is there. We also have, as everybody knows, there's more and more aircraft coming to our area, which is good for business. It promotes growth, promotes job growth and not just jobs, but solid jobs. But we also have to be paying attention to what happens with the airport. The runway that runs parallel to that is runway 0220. And so the, there is a safety zone that touches this property. Safety zone is a buffer area away from the runway in case there's an incident. We want to make sure that residential homes are not in that, that safety zone in case an aircraft goes down as it's on approach or on takeoff. So proximity airport is important in this concept. What you're seeing now in front of you is that future land use map change request that we're looking for. The arrow is pointing to our parcel, which has the single-family residential comprehensive plan layout. Next to us to the east is the mixed residential neighborhood. In the gray to the north is light industrial. Both those parcels in, to the west, at the top of the, our parcel is also gray and that is light industrial. And so, looking at this, we have light industrial surrounding it and then we have a mixed use with the comprehensive plan saying that we should be single-family residential. This is the island I was talking about. We're creating, there is existing an island. If we leave it this way, the island stays. If we modify it, the island goes away in that we have light industrial to the north, light industrial to the west, light industrial where we would be. And that, and the blue line is essentially Ramsey. That's the growth area. That's the widening of the area, the road that you're doing. And so our parcel would make a nice buffer for the residential properties to the east by having that arterial run through light industrial, light industrial. And immediately to the west of our lower L shape is Spokane, or excuse me, is the county property. So Cooney County has that, that property. So the comprehensive plan needs to be modified to get rid of the island and our plan is, our request and application is a good way to do that. All right. So we talked a little about safety zone, the runway protection zones, and I want to talk a little bit about noise patterns as well. So the, the airport does influence property. There's no way to doubt it. It does. I currently work in a spot where people take off and I like airplanes, so it's great. But you hear them, right, and you see them and they take off and they land. That's where a majority of the incidents occur, honestly. So having an area that is not residential in a, in a safety zone is, just makes good sense. This gives you an idea of what that safety zone looks like. So the red dotted line is a safety zone for runway 0220. Inside that safety zone, a residential house cannot be built, period. However, light industrial, we can use it, right? It's okay to use that property under, yes, sir?
So that I can make sure I see it, where is your property in relation to the red dotted line?
Great question. We are parcel two and parcel one. So it touches down here on parcel two and then it touches up here on parcel, excuse me, parcel two above and then we have them both labeled, only labeled correctly. So there's two parcels, but one of them down here and one of above.
And when you say houses cannot be built within that safety zone, where is that found? Is that found within the airport?
Yes. The FAA, it's an FAA rule. Noise. There is, you know, working around the airport and being part of the airport, you know, going to the airport board meetings, noise is a factor in airports. Planes take off, jets take off. And there's, there's a decibel amount, there's a threshold level that has been laid out, discussed, and has been included in your comprehensive plan. So the 2040 comprehensive plan, looking at page 20, has this quote in it. And so in here, we're talking about the day-night average noise level, the DNL. It's recommended that anything over 65 is not conducive to residential use. Okay? The area in our star on this map covers our parcel. The green line is a 65 and over decibel number. Our property sits in the 65 and over decibel area. According to the comprehensive plan 2040, our parcel is not conducive to residential use. Here's a better picture of that safety zone that also gives you some insight of what types of parcel, what types of uses are surrounding our parcel again. So looking to the north, I commented on the map with the gray section. It may have been hard to see. Here's a, here's a section with blue, light industrial to the north, Cooney County to the west, Lakes Highway District to the west, Ramsey Road running between Cooney County, Lakes Highway District, and our parcel, Forest Service. This becomes a pretty nice buffer for the residential uses going to the east. Again, just to the east of our parcel, that is a mixed residential area. That's single-family, duplex, triplex area. Our parcel currently in the comprehensive plan is set to be single-family residential. It doesn't work. Again, it creates that island. Light industrial is a better use. The residential suburban zone, farmettes, also, it may work, but I don't know that there's going to be a lot of people who want to go put their nice big home with their mini-farm in an area that is 65 decibels and over, right? Which your comprehensive plan says, don't use it for residential use. So we're, the very nature of what the comprehensive plan says with regard to decibels, the nature of the proximity to the airport, the nature of the proximity of runway 0220 makes this request that we're making to the council now of changing the comprehensive plan and changing the zone to a light industrial, an absolute appropriate move for safety reasons, flight reasons, island reasons. Here is Mr. David Callahan, the AICP Director for Cooney County Community Development. This is his response. It's in your packet as well. When asked for staff report or comment from agencies, this is his, quote, "Given the proximity to the airport and that light industrial uses are more compatible with the airport than residential, I support," or "I support the proposed change." So Cooney County's Community Development Director is saying this is a good move. In my comments, I have kind of combined the FLUM request and the rezoning request. So for efficiency, I might go through these a little faster. If you have questions, please let me know, but I don't want to take too much time from people. All right. Our amendment to the zoning map and zone text shall align with the zone district's proposed intent. Yes, the proposed intent is that the residential suburban is a suburban zone with a single-family residential lot, that merely a little farmette, a little agricultural uses. residential lot, that minimal little farmette, little agricultural uses, our light industrial request. This is the light manufacturing, processing, distribution, wholesale, retail, sales in an environment that's clean, quiet, free of noise, odor, dust, and smoke. It's not a heavy industrial use. It's a light industrial use. So in this location, the residential suburban doesn't really align with the zone district's purpose. I've kind of said this before, but it's a lighter, it's a larger lot with minimal agricultural use, a little farmette. The proximity to the airport is not appropriate for that small farm use. Again, the audible, the zone, the safety zone makes the light industrial use a better use than small farm or a single-family residential house. So if the FLUM is approved and the change we're requesting, then the amendment to the zone map and zone text shall be consistent with the neighborhood context. This map has a lot of lines, a lot of colors, but essentially what we're saying is, looking at the parcels, as we did on that earlier map with the colors, you've got to the north, light industrial. You've got to the west, light industrial. You have one piece there in Bravo that is, the lower piece is not light industrial, but we do have inside your packet, a letter of approval and support from that particular owner, saying that they think that it's a good use to have our property switch to light industrial. And then you've got the different other governmental uses in Alpha, and then another light-type use in Echo. To get some context to the map that I just showed you and what's going on, this property, the Johnson Automotive property, is currently zoned light industrial. It was changed by Hayden, the City of Hayden, in the City Council, from a residential suburban to a light industrial use. So the property just to, and you can see from that map, the green circle, our property is in the red outline, kind of underneath the parcel polygon titled box. So that parcel was residential suburban and was changed to light industrial by the City As I said just a moment ago, the neighboring parcel that is not light industrial, now on your, on the screen as marked in yellow or green, is, the owner there gave us, and it's in your packet, a letter that indicates that he supports the zone change. So the residential user next to us is saying, hey, this is a good use. It's a good thing to do, and it's an appropriate change. So the rezone. "The amendment to the zone map and the zone is consistent with neighborhood context." To review. The FLUM change is in accordance with the goals and policies, and the lateral safety zone, considering the proximity of the airport, this is a good move. The sound contours, 65-plus DNL, residential use is not the right fit for this location. That's what your 2040 plan currently says. Anything 65 and over, don't put houses there. This is in the 65 and older, over area. Our neighboring parcel that would be separated, isn't, because Johnson Automotive changed their zone already from rural suburban to light industrial, and Barry Brackett, the owner of the only parcel left between us and the airport, says, I agree with this. So the amendment to the zone map is consistent with the neighborhood context. And again, I want to bring up Mr. Callahan's comment, or his quote, "Given the proximity to the airport and that light industrial uses are more compatible with the airport than the residential, I support the change." Any questions that I can answer for any council members?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, what do you anticipate putting there?
Right now, we anticipate some, well, Stancraft has some warehouse-type uses. That might be what we use there on that piece. We're running out of space, honestly, so we want to build some more of those, and that's not conducive in the residential use.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions from council members? Yes, sir.
Do you anticipate using any paints or cleaners at this new facility?
I can't say for certain no, but we do have on our current campus, where we do our varnishing, we do our sanding and all of that, because of the nature of what we do currently, we don't want to move the boats around. We want to keep them in one spot. The more we move them, the more dirt and dust gets on them. So our build facility has most of that contained on our current campus. Yes, ma'am.
One more question. How tall will your building be? I know that...
I don't know the answer to that either, but it will be within the code section as light industrial is requiring.
Okay. Is that 30, three stories? Is that the restriction? Donna, can you tell me, is it three stories that it could be?
Light industrial allows for 60 feet, and then it allows for 45 feet within a certain distance of the runway. So off the top of my head, I can't tell you how far that way that is.
Yes. Any other questions?
No other questions or comments? Thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you. Yeah.
Donna, could you provide us with a summary of the staff report?
Yes, sir, you have a question?
Well, I was just going to mention, I own the property to the north.
All right, sir. Sir, what I need to have you do, if you'd like to make a comment during the comment period, is there is a sheet, there's a form at the back there. If you would, it says, public hearing comment form, and if you could fill that out and bring it up here, we'll give you an opportunity to speak.
Sorry, my hand has a writing cramp. So the commission, or the council in this case, shall consider the existing zone district, any regulations, and may recommend approval, conditional approval modifications, or denial of the proposal, or can request additional studies. And so we looked at the transportation, right-of-way dedications, trip gen letters, TIA analysis. So based on the applicant's proposal, the Planning and Zoning Commission did not believe that any additional studies or plans were necessary. Any future development of the light industrial, if it moves to light industrial, or if it gets approved, any future development of that site would require those in accordance with our typical sections for those streets in place at the time of that development. It requires trip gen letters to be submitted at the time of application, and our TIA analysis is based on our adopted policies. Who are we pointing? Okay, sorry, watching, pointing fingers up there. So in the sewer basin, this is in the H6 sewer basin, and model assumptions were identified in the staff review. We talked about those model assumptions, and this didn't change that. However, light industrial is kind of a, a bit of a fluid object. Some light industrial may require additional sewer tech memo at the time that, you know, they decide what they're building, and some may fall right within the sewer model assumptions. So again, no proposed items there. And then related to parks, and looking at the park plan and the transportation plan, a greenway is along North Ramsey Road, along with that bike path, so there'll be some landscaping along that side of the road as well. So that's how they got to that decision.
Donna?
Yes, sir.
Are there any requirements for greenway or sidewalk swales along the east side on, let's name that, Thunderland or?
Thunder Road. So Thunder Road has just standard landscaping adjacent to the streets. You have a pavement curb, the swale area has trees required in it, and then the sidewalk.
It's not currently, there is something that they would have?
Correct. They would have to put in. And then depending on how their site development is constructed, there may be additional parking, perimeter landscaping that's required on site as well.
Thank you.
So then, the City Council may impose conditions upon rezoning, and as was identified by the applicant, and also in the written recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission, they did not believe that additional studies, well, that says studies and plans, but additional conditions were required as well. So then, "An amendment to the zoning map and zone text shall be in accordance with the future land use map." And so this is kind of a broader picture of the future land use map. And as we talked in our workshop previously, when you're making future land use, you're kind of drawing with a big marker. And so this is extended pretty much in, just an extension of what is already there showing residential, single-family residential to the east and extended onto the city limits. Should be identified that at that time that we were working through the Imagine Hayden process, this land was owned by a previous owner who had requested a conditional use permit for a church to be located in this location. Now that the ownership has changed, that use request isn't valid anymore. So the 2040 comprehensive plan, future land use map identifies the land uses with definitions related to single-family residential is what's proposed in the map. So that's a land use type, which represents a classic Hayden neighborhood, where single-family homes dominate and densities are low, typically ranging from three to four units per acre. Excessary dwelling units are permitted, two-family dwellings are not. And then light industrial land uses in the comprehensive plan identify that its activity is primarily made up of light manufacturing, processing, and distribution services. So land use regulations will be applied in ways that respect public needs, minimize conflicts with nearby land uses, and protect the private property rights of land owners. That's identified in the comprehensive plan as well. Mr. Hillsop, I've provided you with several goals and policies. Some of them are similar, and some of them are different than what staff has identified and pulled out. And as I've said in every presentation that I'm up here, everybody reads the goals and policies with a slightly different lens, and some of them stand out to one person that might not stand out to somebody else. That's why they're always all included in every staff review that you guys have before you. So the ones that the staff pulled out is that the comprehensive plan is a living document. It serves as a guide, and components are updated as necessary to reflect the community's vision. The City of Hayden should encourage development within the corporate limits prior to annexation of adjacent areas. And you provide a balance of uses, both commercial as well as residential. And commercial uses are identified as being along established transportation corridors. Ensure that all development can be serviced by existing public facilities or extended to adequately serve that development. Establish that balance between jobs and housing to attract new employment and living opportunities. Coordinate that timely development of efficient, effective, and environmentally sound sewer water and other utility infrastructure. And ensure that ordinances and policies do not violate private property rights, adversely impact property values, or create unnecessary limitations on land uses. So then the policies that kind of were pulled out by staff again is that the city should judiciously evaluate the opportunity to provide sewer water and other services. That development should be compatible with the land use chapter of the comprehensive plan and fiscally responsible in supplying adequate transportation utilities. The city should evaluate community-wide impacts from development. They should promote nodes of development along transportory, along transportation corridors. Should encourage rezoning and zoning text amendments to support the creation of transition zones between residential and industrial uses. Coordinate and support local water and irrigation districts. Encourage that small-scale business activity. And ensure land use and zoning compatibility related to the development occurring in close proximity to Cortland Airport. So here's another peek at that Cortland Airport lateral safety zone with an excerpt of the table that's part of the information with, in the Cortland's master plan. So here's the runway area taxiways. This is Wyoming Avenue and Ramsey Road as part of the Ramsey Road project, and this is Lakes Highway District's current shop location. And that is the yellow boundary of that area as being identified as the lateral safety zone, which is this number two in here, and it notes that single-family homes are not an allowed use in that, within that yellow area. Basically, anything that has a high density of folks. Parking and cemeteries isn't allowed use. And then there are areas that are down here under light industrial specifically identified that are allowed with some additional conditions that are identified. Okay? So then other chapters of the comprehensive plan that were pointed out in the staff review included Chapter Four Land Use, Chapter Eight Economic Development, and Chapter Nine Parks and Recreation. Amendment to the zone map and zone text shall align with the zone district's purpose and intent. So residential suburban, as was identified, is to provide for single-family residential on larger lots with minimal agricultural uses. And light industrial provides for light manufacturing, processing, distribution, and wholesale retail sales in an environment that's clean, quiet, free of noise, odor, dust, and smoke. There is the zone map as it looks. Stinson Estates, we all know, is all single-family residential, and the reason it's mixed residential is because it's on smaller lots, so those are single-family homes that are there. They're bordered to the north by light industrial. This is a light industrial lot. And you did receive a letter in the first comments that are part of the staff review from the owner of this piece. And we'll go into further detail in the next slide, and it'll show you what's further down. But as a looksee, that's kind of what the zone map looks like. So the amendment to the zone map shall be consistent with the neighborhood contexts. So that's where in the staff review, I actually identify each of these parts and pieces. D is a single-family residence. However, it is in a light industrial zone, so the single-family residence existed first, and light industrial was zoned after the house was there. So it is a non-conforming structure. These are all single-family residences in Stinson Estates, and these are all single-family residences in whatever that subdivision is, Riley Place, south of Stinson Estates. This is the Eagles site. These two lots are Eagles, so they're zoned residential suburban, but they're allowed to be there by conditional use permit, but allowed for that use in a zone that they're more akin to a commercial use in that area. And then these two properties are single-family residences on larger minimal lot sizes. These properties are all in the county, A are all in the county, but they're all within the airport area and used for airport purposes. Okay? Okay?
Can you go back to that definition of light industrial? There you go. Process, distribution, wholesale, retail, sales, environment, cleans. So there are noise limitations. Do you know what the, how the decibel level?
Based on our noise ordinance, which is not a decibel factor, it's a, to the annoyance of others, is what that really talks about.
Okay, fine. Wholesale, retail, okay. Okay, thank you.
So I put the future land use map and the zone map up in comparison, side by side, for your use in, during public comments, if that works for you. The Hayden Lake irrigation identified no comments or concerns, and any future development shall meet their requirements with respect to infrastructure. The 2020 collection system master plan update identified the property to be within the H6 basin, which is not yet developed. developed. Dry utilities, gas, electric, cable, phone shall be installed underground as part of any future development in conformance with our code. Dedications of right-of-way at the time of future development. So as the applicant identified, the right-of-way for Ramsey Road has already been purchased. Any future development on the project site would require dedication of required right-of-way on Wyoming and Sandler in accordance with the typical sections adopted at that time. And Northern Lakes Fire Protection District conditions shall be met as part of any future development. There were 30 agencies that were noticed for public comments, and we received no comments from Avondale Irrigation District. You know, like, why are they on there? Out around the airport, we have both Avondale Irrigation District in parts and Hayden Lake Irrigation District in parts, and I can never really tell who I'm supposed to cite. I just noticed a both. Penhandle Health District had no comments at this time. Hayden Lake had no irrigation district had no comments or concerns. The Kootenai County Community Development heard their comments related to the proximity and that light industrial uses are more compatible with the airport. The Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board had no comments. Idaho Fish and Game identified that they didn't have any comments to submit for this application. Cortland Airport didn't have any comments. And Idaho Department of Water Resources noted that it was not within their jurisdiction or had no jurisdictional comments. Prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing, we noticed 38 adjacent properties. One of them was in favor, and that was Barry Brackett. You have his comments in your packets. And those opposed were Larry Mitchell, who's a resident, and you have his comments. Edwin Zadliz was a resident, and Kathy and Rob Pickin. All of them cite concerns about traffic, noise, congestion. So then, as part of the city council noticing process, we noticed again. And we received comments from the Cortland Airport again, responded with no comments. Babbitt Wiltzy responded in favor. Preston is a resident. He's opposed. He was concerned related to traffic and types of traffic on Wyoming Avenue. And then we got one additional comment that came in after the staff review included in the workbook. Kathy and Rob Pickin were also opposed, but it's a really short comment, so I agree.
In addition to their added, then they have a comment?
They did.
Previously, in addition, okay.
I'm not sure what it said on my desk, but it's in the block. Those are the five standards of approval for a zone map amendment that we have kind of gone through in their entirety. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended to city council to approve the comprehensive plan amendment request from single family to light industrial. And they also recommended to city council to approve the zone map amendment request from residential to light industrial. So then the city council can, at the conclusion of the public hearing and your deliberations, can make a choice.
Questions?
Donna, I would like to know the maximum height would be based on its proximity to the airport.
That would be determined consistent with code at the time of an application for a building permit.
So we can't know now if that's 300 feet from a runway?
If we were concerned about the height of the of the structure, if it came in above that 45-foot threshold, and we were concerned about its proximity to the runway, we would send them to the airport to get sign off from the airport before we would issue a building permit in excess of the 45 feet. Most buildings around the airport, in fact, I can't remember a time when, but don't come in higher than that 45-foot threshold.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Siderp.
Just to cover our basis, Donna, any effects of this change, would it have on the Lakes Highway District property that you can think of? And you said the right-of-way has been purchased for the
For the Ramsey Road.
So no effect on that?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Other questions, council members?
If I didn't have one, I
Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
Everybody wants to be last.
We want to go in. Well, I thought we were going to
No, go ahead.
Mr. Roder.
Go ahead. What I see in number two is we could approve with conditions. My question is whether, and this comes from a sewer point of view, and I don't know why I have a stinky point of view here, but it's just one of the things that we are not able to do adequately is know the usage of commercial and industrial, or therefore even residential sewer usage. In other words, how much wastewater there, any of those buildings are producing. Could we, could we, as a standard of approval, ask that a sewer meter be put on this facility so that in the future, we know exactly how much sewage that they are using and then give the adequate billing? Because right now, we don't know the answer to that. We've tried to get from the water suppliers, the usage of water in any given building, and we aren't able to get that information. So we can't tell the water going out, and we don't know what the sewage is coming, water going in, sewage going out. So my question again is, could we, as a standard of approval, require a sewer meter be put on a building that would be, or buildings that would be eventually built on the property?
Are you considering it like a zoning development agreement?
I don't know. I'm just saying that there's a, this is for our future needs.
Well, we're not at building phase, which is where the confusion's coming in, and I think the concern. And so I want to address really kind of what you're looking at so that we handle it correctly, because we're only at comprehensive, a future land map amendment and zone change. We're not anywhere near a project being proposed.
I understand.
So maybe, though, I think maybe we could get at it with a zoning development agreement that would require any future building include the meter consistent with our recent policy change.
If, as part of building permit process, we have them state that they will provide their water usage upon request, is that not?
More concerned about sewer.
But the sewer is based on the water usage.
Okay.
I just want to get at the other edge of that, the sewer.
Yeah.
The code, the code also has an ability for us to request that they put in a deduct meter, but that requires somebody to read it.
So I don't know if we even have the staff to read a sewage meter, but I know in the future, if we could do this, I'm just trying to prepare for the future. The other question would be, along the same way, would require as a condition of approval to be able to have an access point in their sewer line to test their sewage.
We passed that in the last council meeting.
Okay, so we're good. Okay. So that's the only thing that I have a concern about is a sewer meter and at what point we can require that. Mr. De Priest.
Okay, thank you. See, last. Along those lines, and I'm going to assume here that this would also wait until a proposal, building proposal came forward in regard to the roadway Sunder Road?
Sunder.
Sandler, okay, is if at that time, depending on what the structure proposal was, in this proximity to Sandler Road and the homes in there, regarding landscape buffer, similar to what I think we have in these apartments down here where trees grow, you know, and act as a buffer, is that something that at that point in time could be considered as a development agreement related to the building?
I believe, Mr. De Priest, we may be getting into deliberations section here as opposed to just asking questions here. So perhaps we
I will defer into deliberations.
Shall we do that for deliberations? Any other questions of Donna? Thank you very much.
Which slide would you like me to leave at? This one or that one?
It's on my automatris.
How about that one? Flip a coin. Thank you very much. Now is our opportunity for public comment. We will be, commenters will be called on in order of those in support, neutral, and those opposed. Our first commenter is in support of Mr. Robert Zahari. And Mr. Zahari, when you come up to give us your information, if you could please state if you are a resident of the city of Hayden.
Yeah, I apologize for coming in kind of dirty here. I was trying to take advantage of the rain yesterday, so I've been out bush hogging today to try to do it and a little bit of reduction on the dirt, but there's still plenty of dirt out there. I wish it was, we need a little more rain still. I have the
Are you, are you a resident of the city of Hayden?
I'm sorry. Resident of Cortland. I have property in Hayden.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Okay, I have the five acres right in here. Got a, I share approximately 430 feet of boundary line with the property there. We are light industrial. I would welcome the opportunity to have light industrial on my southern boundary. Just, I think it would reduce any conflicts that I might have over the years as we develop our property. So I very much would, you know, welcome the opportunity to have Standcraft there, whether they're doing storage buildings or whatever they're doing. I know I've already talked to him a little bit about the improvements on Sandler. You know, when they go to develop through there and do the sidewalks and everything, I was going to tie in with him and do it at the same time. So it'd pretty much clean up the entire street. And I know the one member was talking about a buffer. It sounds like it's already required into the plans. You have to have the swell, the curbing, the trees. That's already a requirement. And I know that that's pretty much going to be required before anyone can really develop anyway. That'll be part of that. So, you know, in my mind, it's really going to help enhance the neighborhood. You know, we don't really have very many houses on Sandler, if any really. But I think there's just one across the street from my place. But there's neighbors that walk up and down the street all the time because there is no sidewalk there. So the development there would actually improve that. And, you know, I would tend to think there would be less traffic. I know there would be on my property, you know, with an office building and a shop and stuff that I've got in my plans right now, rather than having 20 homes. To me, developing in a light industrial fashion, and I'm assuming it would probably be the same for Standcraft, would be the same. You'd be reducing the amount of traffic that would be coming from the development rather than increasing it. So it really should be a positive for the residents in the area. So I'm just lending my voice as a point of support. I've got quite a bit of property around Hayden. I've got 320 acres out on Ohio Match, four acres out at Jim Shores. I've got land up on Highway 53 in this piece, and then my office down in Cortland, and that's where I live. But yeah, I just, I think Standcraft is a great member of the community, and if we can support them and be in their corner, I think the community benefits. I just wanted to share, share that word with you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comment. Our next commenter, who is opposed to the proposal, is Mr. Larry Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell, if you would please tell us if you are a member or a resident of the city of Hayden.
I, I live actually in Stinson Loops. So I am a resident of Hayden. And I'm here to talk to the city council. I hope you guys are smart people, wise, because this guy was a very good salesman. So anyway, I would, with all respect, a very good salesman. So anyway, I'm speaking in favor of upholding the existing comprehensive plan that allows for residential use. I think that's important to the neighborhood, the people, the families that live in the neighborhood. I hope you have all realized that you guys should be responsible to people in the neighborhood that have families and that type of thing. And keep the integrity, even though I know it was, it's a living document, the plan, as you guys talked about. The original intent was to make it residential use. So I think it would be really a violation of the trust of the community to change that plan and make it light industrial. I think light industrial is a potential Pandora's Box. I think it's a very nebulous term. I think there would be noise associated with that. And I, you know, some other activities that are not particularly pleasant. So anyway, he, one of his selling points that he made a great deal about was dealing with noise. I think he way overstated that situation. It's a good selling point. Overstating the noise of the airport. I don't think it's a problem to anybody that lives in that area. The noise can be kind of loud during the daytime during fire season, but the rest of the time, it's negligible. So I think that's a good selling point that he mentioned the noise factor, at least maybe five, six times up here. So I think he way overstated that. It seems like that's his main selling point of going to light industrial. It's more compatible with a noise situation. So anyway, anyway, I know my time's somewhat limited, but I think it's very important in the development of the city of Hayden, and the strong need we have for residential places for people to have homes to live to keep that area residential. So thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thank you for your contribution, Mitch. That concludes the public comment that we have. The applicant has an opportunity for rebuttal, should he wish. Rebuttal must be limited strictly to comments that were made at the podium tonight.
Members of the council, it's not my selling point on noise. It's the DNLs. It's the decibels that are published. I didn't come up with them. The studies didn't make them. Our property sits within that 65 and older spot, 65 and over spot for the decibels. We also have the safety zone. Making this modification, making it from single family residential to a light industrial avoids the island of zoning, and it also provides a spot where we can create jobs that are important to our community as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. It is 6:08, and this hearing is closed. We will now move into council deliberations. Council members, questions or comments? Mr. De Priest.
Okay. Seeing as nobody else, I'll be curious if anybody else speaks. This issue of who wants to go first is anyways, you know, all right. Several issues here that I look at, that I'm looking at, and that have been brought up, and the planning and zoning brought up and the like. And the most recent addition that we added into the standards of approval was context of the neighborhood. And that's pretty much the first thing that I look at and will be looking at when it comes to almost anything we do. Does it fit? And how do I determine whether or not it fits? And this is an interesting one because you have light industrial on what, three, am I seeing three sides? And residential, mixed residential on the other side. So you have two different types of neighborhoods that it fits within the context of. So, okay, what do I go to next? And it was brought up, and I, I don't know, I'm not a, I don't have a crystal ball, but do I think it's likely that in that location, people are now going to come in and have a mini farm or the residential suburban? I wouldn't do it, but that's not saying whatever. But I don't think it likely that it will be used for that type of thing. The lateral safety zone cuts across the top corner of that. And as has been talked about, can't have homes in the lateral safety zone in that area. So that cuts into some of the value of the use of the property, as I see it. The Ramsey extension is already planned along the west side there. I don't, I don't know that people in single family homes are going to be, want to, are we going to want to move them? we going to want to move them closer to that Ramsey extension or the widened Ramsey Road? I don't know. Um, at one point, we have, we keep having this discussion, people want less housing. We're getting too many people moving in here. We don't want, why, why are we, whatever it be, whether it be single-family, the whole gamut, people don't want you to create more housing, and then you turn around. And we had somewhat of a similar discussion earlier. It depends on if it fits the narrative of the individual person, but we do want it. Well, which, which is it? Another thing that I look at, and I, I, I talk about this a lot, light industrial, and people talk about this a lot, their tax burden. Okay, we, we're heavily taxed, we, our burden is imbalanced. You have residential carrying a large percentage of the tax burden versus commercial, and in this case, industrial and the like. And I would like to see not only jobs that come in, but also the creation of the ability to balance, bring that more into balance. So if we can bring business and commercial in there, which will create, to some degree, a, a relief for the residential tax burden, I think a lot of people have been asking for that. Um, well, I went back and asked Donna to go back to the definitions. And again, the main thing that I'm probably, that I'm guessing that we're talking about is noise. And I said, well, is it decibels? What, what is it that's determining this? And I think the term was, it's kind of a public nuisance. So what, what's that mean usually? Someone calls and says, hey, these people are making too much noise. And either the city, or the cops, or who knows what, depending on what it is, go out there and maybe the noise is still being made, maybe it's not. It's, it's somewhat, it's hard to tell how that's going to work. But again, there, there, there is the ability, I believe, for the city to enforce what happens there, if it is creating too much noise, too much dirt, too much, um, of all of those things. Is it wholesale, retail? What's actually happening there? And is it a public nuisance? Where I believe and I hope that the city would have, have an opportunity to mitigate if it were creating a public nuisance. So I, I, I think that that's my comments for right now on the issues that I'm having to weigh in relationship to this, this proposal.
Thank you. Other, other council members? Mr. Satterfield.
As Councilmember De Priest pointed out, when there's a neighborhood already established, they were there first. That's the, the concept. But being very familiar with light industrial, and I'll use the Canila Industrial Park, Light Industrial Park that he has put out there, um, north of Wyoming, I talked to a friend of mine who lives out there, and she was opposed to that years and years ago when it was first okayed. And now she's fine with it because in her opinion, there is less traffic, there is less noise, there is less of almost everything. So I look at it, it's a buffer to the, um, existing neighborhoods. I do think there'll be less traffic caused, especially once Ramsey Road has been approved. And I think it'll help keep, Ramsey will help keep the traffic off of Wyoming and other places. And there are so many restrictions when it comes to noise, odor, and other uses, that those same restrictions really aren't on your next-door neighbor. So, um, you know, I have to say I'm in favor of it.
Ladies first. Ms. White.
Thank you. Yes, I'm, so I'm, um, I know that Standcraft is a real high-quality company. They have a lot of really good, um, businesses in our area, and yet I'm concerned here with the neighborhood context. We do have a lot of homes, uh, that this will be next to. Um, I'm concerned about, um, protecting and strengthening the vitality and stability of existing neighborhoods, and maintaining an attractive and balanced mix of land uses, densities, and housing types. And I'm, I'm very hesitant to let suburban housing, uh, go away. Uh, I'm also concerned about, uh, the, the height restrictions. 60 feet is the highest height of any building that we have in our code. And without an assurance that it's within the 300 feet of the, uh, runway, uh, we can't know that it won't be 60 feet. So that just seems like a very high for me in that neighborhood, so.
Thank you. Mr. Roder, do you have anything to add?
I got a few items. One of my concerns is safety and the proximity of this to the airport, even though there's that critical zone, just touches a little bit of it. I like to be cautious about it. I think it's prudent. Health, safety, and welfare is one of the paramount goals and policies that we have with, with, uh, decisions we make with, with our city. Um, I know a few years ago, there was a single-person aircraft, like one of those light aircrafts that crashed into the element four on Atlas. Um, so it does happen. I don't know that we've had any review on this. I do recall when Empire Ares was out there, that there was someone killed by a prop, although that was in a crash. Um, so, so the safety, and there's less chance if a plane did come down in that location, uh, less chance of injuring somebody with a warehouse or a business, particularly at night, when they're probably not in operation, than a bunch of homes. So there's a safety issue. The other thing Ed brought up, and I won't go over, over, uh, too much more, is that the tax, the burden to the city on providing public services to light industrial and commercial. In a study that I read, it was 89 cents, on every dollar we collect in taxes, 89 cents of public services go out for light industrial and commercial versus residential. It's about a dollar eight. So we go backwards. Um, so I like the idea of jobs, and I know because of the high quality and the, the clientele that, um, Standcraft has is that they pay well, they have good employees, and they buy houses, and they're become part of the community. The other thing is less density. I mean, warehouse, perhaps, versus 20-some houses, I mean, that's something that I like. And was one of my goals as being a member of the council here, is less density. Residential suburban, I think, is, becomes a very costly lot to develop, because you can only put in one house per half of an acre. So that means you got to build a, a bigger home typically, and that's a higher-priced home. I don't see high-priced homes on that lot, on residential suburban. So I think that, that's kind of a mismatch there. I agree with the, the Planning and Zoning Commission, that they unanimously voted yes because it met the goals and policies of our camp plan, and I agree with that.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from council? Donna, I have a question for you. Um, on the chart that we have here, it's, uh, for the maximum building height, it says when the building is located within 300 feet of a residential zoning district, the maximum building height shall be 45 feet. I'm sure this is within 300 feet of a residential zone. So I'm guessing that the, based on that, that we are looking at a maximum of a 45-foot height.
Correct. I haven't measured the distance across, and I'm not sure where they're putting the building, so.
All right, thank you. Um, I, we just had a meeting before this meeting, talking about potential changes to the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and less density keeps coming up. Um, the public comments that were made on this, uh, by Mr. Mitchell's neighbors mostly revolved around traffic. And I virtually assure you that there is going to be less traffic from a warehouse on this particular site than there would be on, well, with residential suburban, they can build 14 houses right now without it ever coming before the council. So it, it seems to me that if we're looking for less density and trying to slow down the growth in Hayden, that this is a logical, logical progression. And I echo the comments of, of Mr. De Priest and Mr. Roder, that having more industrial uses in our city lowers the tax burden of the, of the residential homeowners. So, um, this, this seems to make sense to me. Do we have any other comments or questions from, uh, from council? Hearing none, I would, uh, I would entertain a motion regarding the REVEL Comprehensive Plan, I'm sorry.
You're right, go.
The REVEL Comprehensive Plan Amendment. She's so surprised because I got it right. The REVEL Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
I'll make that motion, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve, uh, TZE-23-0061, REVEL Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Do we have a second?
I'll second then.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further comments from, or questions from the council? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please. Abby?
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
No.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
And Council President Roder?
Yes.
Motion passes. I would now entertain a motion regarding the REVEL Zone Map Amendment request.
I'll go ahead.
Mr. De Priest.
I would motion that we approve, uh, is it the same PZE-23-0061? Uh, the REVEL, REVEL Zone Map Amendment?
Okay.
We have a second on that?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have further comments or discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Abby?
Councilmember White?
No.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
And Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for being here tonight, sir. Our next, uh, section of our council meeting tonight is the Visitor Public Comments Session. For those who wish to comment, please fill out a card that's at the back of the room at the table, and bring it to us here at the front, if anyone hasn't already done so. Public comments are limited to five minutes. At approximately the four-minute mark, I'll wave a piece of paper to let you know you've got about one minute left. We expect commenters to be respectful of other citizens and of council members. Council will not hear any comments on any planning and zoning matter that's before the city or is known to be a likely application. And when it is your turn to speak, please approach the podium and state your name and whether you reside within the Hayden city limits. Our first commenter is Mr. Bill Breezy.
Yes, uh, my name is Bill Breezy. I think I missed Hayden by this much. So I'm on, uh, North Stray, uh, Strayhorn, and, but I'm too far north. Anyway, uh, I am here to talk about the Traffic Management Center again. Uh, I want to, uh, follow up on some of my last comments that I made last month. Uh, I suggested that, uh, that the traffic lights along 90 are not synchronized. Well, I attended the workshop, or the, I'm sorry, open house for KMPO, and I was talking with an ITD, uh, staff member, and, uh, he's, you know, I said, I didn't think the traffic lights were coordinated. He says, well, no, they're not. We're working on a project to resynchronize them. And then I asked him, well, why are you not resynchronizing this before the study for the Traffic Management Center? And he said, oh, you'll have to ask Glenn Miles. You know, so what I, you know, talked about last month, the traffic lights are not synchronized, and, and the, you don't need a Traffic Management Center to resynchronize them because ITD is already, uh, doing that. You know, and then I, I also suggested to him, like I suggested at the last meeting, about, uh, putting up, uh, signs that say if you're doing this speed, that you'll hit the next green light. And he kind of really, uh, that sounds interesting. So, uh, you know, and I, you know, tried to put the bug in their ear. So hopefully, if, maybe the, uh, city council here could, you know, convince, uh, Councilmember White to, uh, you know, bring this forward to KMPO, maybe they'll put some pressure on ITD to bring that forward much faster. Uh, I also want to state that, uh, the Traffic Management Center will not be able to improve traffic flow. Traffic flow, uh, especially in this area of the country, we have snow in the winter, we have road construction and maintenance in the summertime, and, and what do you, what can the Traffic Management Center do about that? Absolutely nothing. And I, and I have a personal experience about traffic flow, is, uh, the first day that I had a tee time out at Twin Lakes, I was, you know, driving down Strayhorn, I went up 41, and, and I'll, my, my tee time was at 8:20. So I got up to, uh, not even rafting yet, and traffic was at a dead stop. And I thought I was going to be late for my tee time. And traffic kept moving, moving, itching forward, itching forward, and then I realized there's an intermediate school right there. And so the next time I left and had the same tee time, I got on my phone, and I put on, brought up Google Maps, and Google Maps said, oh, keep going down Strayhorn, past 41, and go out to 53, you know, go by, go out to Greens Ferry, and hook over to 53. So same time, and I got there lickety-split. Traffic Management Center is not going to be able to control that. The Traffic Management Center is not going to be able to tell you that it is already available. So I want to stand here and, and support Councilmember White's opposition to the Traffic Management Center. I think that's the right thing to do. Uh, you do not need a Traffic Management Center here. There are other ways of, of solving the issues, rather than this very expensive, long-term building that, that they are proposing. So, uh, thank you, Councilmember White, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Breezy. Our next comment is Ms. Teresa Roth.
Hi, I'm Teresa Roth. I'm a Hayden, uh, homeowner, and I, um, want to talk about the survey for a few minutes. Um, I have been following the survey issue pretty closely. It's been going on for about six months or something. Didn't you guys bring it up in January or even end of December? Um, there's three aspects to a survey that are important. One is the content of the questions, and whether they're helpful, or whether they're leading, or whatever. Another is the validity of the people taking them, and whether or not they're actually representative. And the third thing is, how, how is the information going to be used? So I started off very critical. I didn't think the, I didn't think it was a good path to even go down. I did not, I was very unhappy with the original proposed content, but I know that you guys worked really hard on that, and I thought you made tremendous improvements in the content. And I, I tend to be not a big fan of sur, of this type of survey, but I did see a enormous improvement in the content, so much so that I sort of dropped my resistance, and I actually encouraged people to take it. So I am not trying to make the case that the, the, um, survey was biased, although certainly you can always say there's leading questions. My real problem with the survey is inherent. Uh, any survey that is done on an internet, by so, promoted by social media, is extremely biased. When the survey guy was running it in one of the city council meetings, he said, number one, he could take up to, he, he would accept up to three submissions per IP address, meaning that, um, which is sometimes a little legitimate, there could be three voters in a, in a household, or there could be one submitting the same time three times. So that's an inherent problem. A much bigger deal killer for me is the fact that he admitted that he had no idea where these IP addresses were coming from. And he said that in a city council meeting, so you guys all must have known this. There is no way to verify that who took those, that, that survey was actually Hayden citizens. And that can't even be verified. You cannot trace IP addresses without enormous, uh, difficulty, and there's many ways to get around it. So the, so I believe the content of the survey was pretty good, and I believe that, that any survey that is done electronically, especially promoted by social media, cannot possibly have any quote "scientific validity" of it. It is simply impossible. If you, if you had done a, a written survey or a printed survey, and, and- If you had done a written survey or a printed survey and mailed it out to all of the residents, then you could actually have a scientific, you know, credibility to that survey. That's not what you did. What I'm concerned about most is how this survey will be used, because I am not overly critical. I thought there was a lot of good questions in the survey. I thought it was fairly honest. I wasn't, like I said, I'm not complaining about the content. But there's people who want to use any way, any crutch they can, to justify continuing to impose high-density housing on Hayden, and they will use one quote from that whole survey that said that people favored a mix of housing types. Well, what a mix of housing types is, isn't even defined in the survey. It is an ambiguous phrase that people don't even necessarily mean the same thing by. When you see 100 different, when you drive past an apartment and there's 100 units to it and they're all identical and painted, people say, oh, no, that's, you know, not a mix of housing types. When you drive down a street in Old Quarter Lane, what you see is a mix of housing types, even though they're all single-family houses. Every house is different. Some big, some little, size, everything. So you can't even use the phrase "mixed housing type" to justify high-density housing. The fact is, what we've known all along since before last election is that the people of Hayden do not want mass quantities of mixed juice. Okay? And I think we all know that, and I don't want this survey to be used as a fig leaf to cover up an effort to continue to foist high-density housing on Hayden residents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, ma'am. Our next commenter is Ms. Susan Lehman.
Hi, I'm Susan Lehman, and I am a resident of Hayden. I think I'm following up on Teresa's comments, also commenting on the survey, the workshop that was done this afternoon covering the survey and the 2040 plan. And I understand there were a lot of people in the room, which is great, but I do also feel that it's important to have, A, I mean, I don't know what you guys came up with in the workshop, but whatever that is, have it accessible to the public for an extended period of time so we can review it, digest it, see what we think about it, and then have a town meeting or something like that. Because this is the biggest issue in Hayden. You look at the agendas that we have, it's all development, 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 traffic, 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 traffic. That's like, it seems, 80% to 90% of what we deal with here. So this is the biggest issue facing Hayden, and because of that, it is incumbent upon the council to go above and beyond to give the public the biggest participation possible. And you're talking about major, major issues going years into the future. So there has got to be a town hall, there's got to be, in the evening, when the most people can be here, there's got to be a way for people to come in, to have the information, to have seen the information, and to give their point of view before you make any decisions. And I don't even know what decisions are going to be made. Changing the 2040 plan? I don't even know what decisions are going to be made. But the public has, the people of Hayden have got to be included in this to the maximum degree possible. I mean, is that your plan? I don't even know what the next steps are going forward.
Ma'am, we recorded that meeting. You'll have a chance to review that if you'd like to on the Internet.
Okay, but you're not answering the question because you don't answer questions. Yeah.
We can't do that during council meetings, ma'am. Public comment is for public comment.
Who's, I'm just curious, whose rule is that? Where did that come from?
Do you have any more comments, ma'am?
Oh, my God. Do you realize how demeaning that feels? It's supposed to be a conversation between us and you, and it's not a conversation between us and you. All right, I realize you're not going to change it right now. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your comment, ma'am. Our item number four is new business. The first item that we have to talk about is the appointment of Levi Snyder as a representative for the North Idaho Building Contractors Association on the Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee. Councilmember, you've had a chance to take a look at Mr. Snyder's interest form. Do you have any questions or comments regarding his appointment? I did have an interview with him, as he's currently serving as president of the NIBCA. I was quite satisfied with his answers, but I would be happy to answer any questions or if you have any on your own regarding Mr. Snyder, feel free.
I'm adamantly opposed to him being on there because of his attitudes towards, he's too much of a development-minded person, and I think it's a conflict of interest to have him on the Impact Fee Committee when that has the potential of lowering or raising impact fees.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just in response to that, Mr. Satterfield, when he and I spoke, he actually spoke in favor of impact fees, but feels that they need to be justified. Just to give you a heads up there. Might not change your mind, but.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. White?
I was wondering, are there any other applicants also in the shoot?
There are none.
None, okay. And I was wondering, what are the names of the other current members? I didn't see a current list.
Oh, my gosh. That's a, Mr. Boyer, can you, Alan, can you help?
While she's thinking about that, let me throw something in there that may change a couple minds. And I understand concern in having too much weight on builders or developers. When the city settled with NIBCA over the lawsuit, one of the conditions in the settlement was that we would appoint a member from NIBCA to the Impact Fee Committee so that there would be better communication between the city and NIBCA to avoid such issues in the future. So would you like, that was part of the settlement coming out of the, after the Supreme Court decision, and then them deciding whether or not they were going to appeal again, the city entered into a settlement agreement that included that.
So that is basically the NIBCA's selected representative.
Correct.
And that based on the settlement, we almost have no choice. Part of the settlement was that we would have a member of the NIBCA on the committee, and that's their appointed choice.
Correct. It doesn't give any more information like that you have to appoint the person, that particular person. I mean, if there was a specific reason you didn't want that person, you could go back and say, give us another name. But I think under our settlement agreement, we have to accept a member of NIBCA.
I have a question. Do we currently have anybody on this Impact Fee Committee that's a member of the NIBCA?
There was. I think he's no longer a builder. It was Scott Hoag.
Yeah.
Was the representative of NIBCA, and he's retired, not doing building, and so he stepped down, and so then.
This is their replacement.
This is their replacement.
I do have, in order to, I hope, answer your question and get to Ms. White's question. Thank you, Abby, for finding this for me. John Young of Young Construction, Glenn Miles of KMPO, Don Crawford of TOK Realty, Chris Meyer of Parkwood Properties, John Gentry, and Sean Taylor are the current members of the Impact Fee Committee.
Thank you for that information.
Sure. You bet.
I would like to confirm whether or not John Young is a member of the NIBCA. He's very active in a lot of organizations, so I think maybe perhaps we already meet the conditions of that settlement.
I do not know if he's a member of NIBCA.
I am unaware of.
He's a commercial contractor. He's been doing business for years, and most, many builders, if not most builders, are a member of that. So I would like before I make a decision on this to confirm they may already have one. And I'll give you my concern, too, is that the largest lobby group in Idaho, money-wise, is the building, Idaho Housing, what is it called, the Idaho Home Builders Association. And the NIBCA is a member of the state one, and also is a member of the national, which does a lot of lobbying. And their whole goal, and they said it clearly, is to keep building costs down by looking at fees. So I'm not so sure that, even though we have, by settlement, have to have somebody on this committee, I know that, and I'll just give an example, about five years ago, I sat in on an Impact Fee Committee, and the proposal was Connie Kruger, who used to, who worked as a consultant, to look at that fee. The fee was around $1,400 at that point. The proposal was to double it. And John Young, I'll never forget it, he said, if you double that impact fee to $2,800, you're going to shut the building down in Hayden, which is not true. But my point is, that's their point of view. They want to keep the cost down as much as possible. We're on the other side of that, trying to fund our infrastructure. So if we already have somebody on the board, I don't think we need another one, and I don't think we need the president of it. There's a lot of other members that. So I would, my position would be, we haven't voted on it, but I'm not supportive of this.
Mr. De Priest?
Do we know if the specifics of the settlement were, settlement were that it had to be a board member of the NIBCA or any member, so as the Council President Roder is asserting, I guess, I don't know, that Mr. Young is a member, thus, if that would fulfill that requirement of the settlement? I would ask, maybe this isn't the time that we table this until we get some answers.
Take a motion to table.
I'd like to make a motion to table this issue until we can answer, or answer, the relationship of Mr. Young.
Pause for a second, please. Impact Fee Committee meeting tomorrow with a quorum without a NIBCA person unless John Young is part of it. So there's an Impact Fee Committee meeting tomorrow, is the issue. So just so you know what, why I asked to pause for one second.
Well, I'd like to hear the, I'd like to have a complete understanding also. I think Council President Roder brings up a good issue. I, too, have had experiences with, and again, it's understandable, and we're, when we have this discussion on affordable housing and the like, everybody's looking for a way to bring prices down, and that side, of course, is reduce front costs coming in, impact fees and the like. And as Mr. Council President Roder said, we are trying to, we have to fund stuff.
Mr. De Priest? I believe you made a motion on the floor.
I paused his motion, but yes, please finish your motion.
I would, I would motion that we table this until we can, what do we want to know? Until we can find the answers to, is Mr. Young a?
The terms of the settlement agreement and whether or not Mr. Young is a member, and would he meet that.
Or any other person on the floor.
Correct. And I'll second that motion. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion by the council? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please. Abby?
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
And Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next item is the approval of the Honeysuckle and Fourth Street Roundabout Construction Closeout and Release of Retainage. Alan, could you please give us a bit of background on that, please?
As per most public works contracts, any, every public works contract that I've ever been involved with construction-wise, retainer just held on the contract until such time as the contractor meets obligations, usually paperwork obligations to prove that he's paid his taxes, he's got lien releases and subcontractors and whatnot. So the project is complete, it's been complete for a while, we have received all the appropriate paperwork, and therefore we are under obligation to pay him the release of his retainage.
Councilmembers have any questions or comments?
And what is that total retainage?
It's in a memo. Let me see. $59,327.
Thank you. Yes. $59,327.
Oh, there we go. I was looking into the other multiple pages going, or is it in there? Okay, got it, thanks.
Any other comments or questions from council members? I'd entertain a motion.
I'd like the motion that we approve the Honeysuckle Fourth Street Roundabout Construction Closeout and Release of Retainage.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further comments or questions from council? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please. Abby?
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
And Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 4C, the approval of the fiscal year 2024 Idaho Strategic Initiative Program for the Ramsey Honeysuckle Roundabout.
Alan, is that you? Sure. Okay.
Well, this is an opportunity that popped up. This is money that's from the state surplus this year, and they've thrown out opportunities for grant funds that needs to be used in the next year. And just on a staff level, we thought, hey, let's look and see if this makes sense to submit a project. And we talked about submitting this project, and just let Alan explain why and a little bit more about it.
So there's quite a surplus of dollars. Legislation has issued that a certain percentage of that will go to local projects from the state, which takes out of the state transportation dollars that they can spend. So they put a caveat on this, this has to be something that supports highway, promotes highway function. So we were looking for projects that would help promote traffic on local highways, because that was a condition that the state transportation department put on there. And this was the one project that we thought that we could score well enough to fund by, basically, the fact that improvements on Ramsey Road will take loading off of 95. Hoping to make that leap and see that we can get support, and therefore, it's 100% funding, no match. It's state dollars, so there's no federal strings tied to it.
Councilmembers, questions, comments?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. White?
Thank you. I was wondering, how are we coming along with right-of-ways? On that traffic circle?
We're diligently working on right-of-way. This is the, this is a roundabout at Ramsey and Honeysuckle. Just want to make sure we're in the same project. I think the other, the important thing that Brett probably didn't hit that he probably wanted to, is that being able to find dollars to pay for this project means that the money that we were hoping, that we were going to spend on this project can be placed towards other projects in the city to reduce traffic and mitigate traffic impacts, so.
There are, so we were waiting, we were in the process, because we have this all teed up to build and pay for next year. We were in the process of getting the design groups to redesign. They had to make some changes because of the infrastructure, and so they were, we approved additional funding for them to finish that. When we get that, then we'll get the exact right-of-way. And so there's two key property owners that we still need to finalize acquisition of property. Rob Wright is working on those. He's stuck with the owner of the property on the northeast. And then we have Leisure Park, who we have, on a staff level with the mayor, have met with the folks there, and believe we can come to some kind of agreement there. So those are the two main ones. I think there's one other really minor. And, but, right-of-way issues are part of the scoring, and so we would hopefully, between now and then, see if we can't even get letters from them to get on the property to do the project. So, yeah, if it's a So, yeah, if it's a million and a half dollar project, and we can move that million and a half dollars that we have to another project and use grant funds for this, we just get another intersection done.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 Idaho Strategic Initiative Grant Program for the Ramsey Honeysuckle Roundabout.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote please, Abby.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
And Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 4D, the Welch Comer Engineering Consultant Services Agreement for Grant Writing.
Okay, so, yes, sir. To get the grant, you have to write a great grant proposal.
The engineer of record on this project is not Welch Comer, but Welch Comer happens to have one of the best grant writing teams in the area. It's been our experience. They do grant writing for a number of public agencies. They're not the only one. There's, there's probably one other firm, maybe two. However, they're already on our pre-approved list. They are, I think they're one of the top grant writing outfits, and therefore we asked them if they had the time and the ability to do this. They said they did and that they would be more than happy to help us get down to that process. And so we reached out to them and they gave us a proposal, do that. The proposal's a very, very good price, in my opinion, and we are probably getting one of the better grant writing personnel to do this for us, so.
I also note that in your, in your memo, you said the cost will be $5,000 and will be taken out of impact fees. Okay, so it would not come out of a basic city budget.
Right.
Okay. Questions from council? Ms. White?
Yes, could you clarify the wording on Exhibit A for me? It says they shall pay the engineer for the services following hourly amount, and then has $5,000, so. Should we change the wording of hourly amount? Is this a one-time fee?
Which paragraph we'd look at?
In the chart, the little line right above the little graph says, "City shall pay engineer for the services identified here in the following hourly amount." And then it lists $5,000.
That bill will be based upon the cumulative hours charged to the specific category of service and specific projects during the billing period for each class of engineering employee in turn, including consulting, engineering reimbursement expenses, schedules, standards, hours rates attached, as you may alter. So if it splits, the deal will be paid on an hourly basis for the hours that they occurred on that split bill, up to $5,000.
Up to $5,000.
Up to, yeah.
Okay.
Other questions?
I'd like to...
Ms. White, go ahead.
Yeah, is this a one-time application fee? This, we're approving a one-time thing here.
This is a, this is a, this is a contract to hire Welch Comer Engineering to prepare a grant application for this specific project. Is that what you're...
Yes, that's exactly what I want to know. Thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none, I'd be, like to entertain a motion. Mr. Satterfield?
Um, yes, I'm sorry, I would make the motion to approve the Welch Comer Engineering Consultant Services Agreement for Grant Writing.
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please, Abby.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
And Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number five, reports. We have a city administrator report. Mr. Boyer?
Just a couple of quick items. I might mention, and I can find more information, just responding to Teresa, I appreciate her comments, they were, they were good comments. One of the things on the survey, each of those scan codes came, were under a different number. So when we sent out the, about 3,000 emails to our, the folks that pay their utility bill, he was able to track those that used that, and he said, from at least through most of it, 80% of the respondents were from those emails. I can verify that was a little bit early on, and so that's how he was tracking. So each of those scan codes had a different number that he could recognize. So when they were coming in, based on those scan codes, he could look at to see where they were coming from. So we had a different scan code for the newsletter, for the, for the utility billing and others. I think even on the senior center, when they did the handwritten ones, those were all separate. And so he was able to tell. And so I think that's where he was getting at, being able to tell where they were coming from. But I can, I can get more information, but I thought Teresa's comments were, were good questions. So I just wanted to mention that. So in two weeks, at our next council meeting, we have our budget public hearing, so I wanted to mention that. And in that, annually, we always look at our fees, and we talked about updating our fees, and so as part of that, between now and then, I wanted to give you a heads-up that we've got the fee schedule that we put out, and we can get you your own copy, or the public can get a copy of that if you have any questions, so you can be looking at that before the next meeting. We have the public hearing, the mayor and I talked about that, and he was good with sending that out. We talked about through the budget process, one of the main ones is the sewer fee. We're on a five-year plan that we received from FCS that we needed to increase that amount by a set amount to be able to pay for the things that we needed to, and so we were following that plan. And originally, the council considered just approving it for the all five years, but then they, they said, "Let's do it each year." So that's one that's on there, and the monthly amount, it goes up by 250. And then, so that's part of the public hearing. And then we mentioned next year, the NIBCA settlement portion comes off of the bill. So anyways, I just wanted to mention that, and appreciate that the mayor was, we needed to get that out there and get it noticed, to get it ready for the public hearing. But there's two weeks, if anybody has any questions on those. We go to the department heads and say, "Are there any fees that you have that need to be updated or a new fee?" Because we can't make money on these fees. They're based on what's the estimate and cost of service. And for example, Recreation, there was a couple that she has increased just based on, I think, like $5 to keep up with cost of living, so you'll see some of that. And Donna had a bunch just wording changes on hers. So just, but wanted to give you plenty of time between now and next, the hearing, if you have any questions coming in, we can go through any of those fees. The minutes are up to date. I think that's, we talked about that before, those are all caught up. And our goal is to have those at each next meeting periodically. That may not hit, but there, we are up to date on that. Lastly, a couple items, again, this is just a thank you to Recreation, Public Works, those of you that attended Hayden days. They're, they're really fun, again, and those are the, the fun, small-town things that you get to go participate. The parade was fun. My, my personal favorite was the flyover, to see the planes start, start the parade. And then the band area was full on Friday night, and was fun on Saturday. So they do a tremendous job getting that all ready and making sure everything goes well, and appreciate all their hard work. And they also help out with National Night Out, which was, I saw a couple of you there, that was the most people I've ever seen at our National Night Out, and it was really fun. They had the helicopter come in, and that's, that's with police and firefighters and those folks in the area. A lot of kids were here, so those are fun events that kind of keep that small-town feel, so. Anyways, appreciate all the help from staff on that. That's all.
Roundtable items, just any member of council, Mr. De Priest?
Of course, right.
Item for the, item for the roundtable.
A couple of things, and it was discussed briefly at the workshop, which I had on my list here for this time. Hayden and Hutter and Hayden and Atlas, the stop signs, the four ways or two ways or whatever, the accidents that we're having there are really, really, really concerning, and we discussed finding ways to hopefully mitigate, deal with, whether it's four-way flashing or whatever it is, but we're going to look into what we are statutorily allowed to do, and hopefully we can find the best way possible at this point in time to maybe get people to pay more attention to what they're doing when they're driving, and their speed and stuff like that. Secondly, I spent a fair amount of time wandering the halls and observing and the like, and Mr. Boyer addressed it. What a lot of people don't know, and hopefully those who watch it, is that in the last year or so, there's been a lot of change here, change over, turnover, whatever, we've had long-term illnesses and things like that. And in my opinion, we are, the city staff is understaffed and overburdened. And the staff spends a lot of time shuffling and taking over helping with duties and the like. And that means sometimes those which are not as pressing need to be put on the backburner a little bit so that they can take care of business that is necessary at the time. Another issue that, that involves whether things are put out in what is a timely manner, which is up to definition of people, has to do with the requests by the public for information. I forget the exact numbers, but I talked today about it. For some reason, the number 69 or 70 is sticking in my mind for three years ago, request for public information. The following year, it went up well over 169 or something like that, and the year after that went to 200 and some odd requests for information from the public. And that takes a lot of time to do also. And so with the staff that we have, I think this staff does an outstanding job getting the information that is not only requested, but things like the minutes and stuff like that out. As Mr. Boyer said, and I verified it, the minutes are up to date, and the goal is to get them out by the next meeting, which I think is, I've kind of done some nosing around, is basically the industry standard. I, I, I just think that people need to understand that the workload on the staff and the dedication on this staff, and I'd like to thank the staff for things like that, but along with that, we have an issue of, you're going to hear a lot of transparency, and we keep hearing that term. They're not being transparent with you. Any citizen has the ability and has the right to request any information that the city can statutorily provide. You know, there's things like, you can't, personnel and medical, and there's things like that that you can't be given, but other than that, the city will provide you with anything that you request that they are legally allowed to give you. And again, those of you watching and those in the, in the, in the audience here, and like I said, when you have 200 requests and things like that, they go up from like 69 or 70, and it have been almost exponentially increasing. I believe that the city is very transparent. I don't believe the city is hiding anything. All you have to do is ask and follow the process. So I would request, I would ask that if you have something you want to know, fill out the forms, and my experience is, the city staff does an outstanding job at meeting those requirements, so. With that, thank you.
Other roundtable items? Mr. Satterfield?
I just want to thank, I echo Ed's comments about staff. I've experienced it for 16 years, and it hasn't changed one iota. It doesn't matter who's sitting in the chair or what position they hold, they all have a high degree of integrity, which is a very important aspect to me. But moving on from that, I'd like to thank Susie. You know, hell of a Hayden days again, Susie.
I can't deal with that.
And your staff.
Guys, I'm telling you.
Your staff, you know, I can't remember everybody's name, you know, I'm, some days I can't remember my own. And Wade, the Streets Department and his crew, Ron Reno.
Wait until Thursday morning at 5:00 AM, paint the numbers.
Yep. Ron Reno, Parks Crew. I mean, it's a collaborative effort of almost everybody in City Hall that somehow participates and makes it such a wonderful, wonderful event. I chose this year not to ride in the parade, I chose to be a spectator. One of the reasons was because my granddaughter was in the parade. I wanted to see her from a spectator's point of view. Absolutely, absolutely best choice I've ever made in my life. And Susie's staff, I won't get into details, went way in above anything to make that one of the most pleasurable experiences for my wife and my granddaughter, and thank you, thank you, thank you.
Good job, Susie.
Our pleasure.
Other comments? Roundtable?
I have one of...
Yes, sir. Ms. Roder?
Talking about transparency, I found Brett, that people can go to him, and he's a really busy guy, particularly during budget time, the hours that he puts in, but if anybody has a question, he will make the time, maybe not in your timeframe, but based on his schedule. I don't see any issue with transparency by going through with Brett and asking questions. I mean, he knows what's going on, he's, he's an honest guy, and so if you have questions, give him a call. He, he, if he doesn't know the answer, he'll find out for you. So please use him as a resource. He's, he's a great guy, and I really appreciate, he's a, he's a, I don't know, he's a captain or he's a captain of the ship, but they both co-captains, so hats off to Brett and talk to him.
Other comments?
Yes, yeah, speaking of transparency, I'm glad we were able to videotape today's workshop meeting. I think that's helpful for people to be able to see where we're coming from and what we're thinking, and be able to give feedback that way. Thank you.
Our next item is an executive session under Idaho Code 74-2061C to acquire an interest in real property which is not owned by a public agency. I would entertain a motion from council to enter into executive session. Mr. De Priest?
I would move that we move into executive session for Idaho Code 74-2061C to acquire an interest in real property which is not owned by a public agency.
Before we, before we move for, do you have a second?
Yes.
Okay, before we make that vote, for those of you that may be interested, we anticipate this executive session taking approximately 20 minutes, and then we will return and have an open session regarding our item number seven.
You can take a chair into the hallway.
With a motion and a second, do we have any questions or comments?
Is it possible before we go into executive session to take a short?
Yes, yes, but let's, thank you. Let's make the motion and decision on executive session first. Hearing none, no other comments or questions. Roll call vote please, Abby.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
And Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
We adjourn until 7:20, and ladies and gentlemen in the audience, at that, I'm going to have to ask you to leave until we come back from executive session. Thank you.
Oh, my God.